We have the county budget. Dr. Wanda Green is going to tell us about our budget that she presented last week. And I think there will be some embedded public hearings on this per General Assembly amendment.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you. It doesn't seem like it's just been a week. It's been a very busy one. I wanted to kind of hit some of the highlights so that we remind everybody of what's in the budget and how things have changed. I always like to remind everybody that we have some guiding principles that we follow when we put any budget together. That is, we do focus on our core services and our priorities, which are education, public safety, human services. We do all we can to realign existing resources to meet those priority needs. We are a very flexible, always-changing organization, and we do maintain our long-term comprehensive planning focus. I'd like to remind everybody in the audience and at home, when you look at the items that are listed in the blue circle, those are services that are provided just by the county. They're provided regardless of corporate limits. We did build this budget on the existing 60.4% tax rate. We did build it in a way and did our planning so that we can maintain our AAA bond rating because we do have some buildings coming in AB Tech very soon. It is a balanced budget. The general fund portion of this budget is $320.349 million. The non-general fund at $86.2 million for a total of $107 million budget. If we take a look at our revenue stream, it's property tax, intergovernmental, and sales tax are our big revenue streams. I was asked a question earlier today and wanted to answer that question. If you look at our 10 big urban counties, out of the 10, we are number nine in terms of revenue being, property tax revenue being a major stream. There are eight counties above us whose property tax encompasses more or represents more of their revenue stream. In fact, there are five of them who have over 60% of their property tax representing or their revenue stream is 60% or more property tax. So I think we try really hard to look for other revenue sources and use the ones that we have as much as we can. I'll be answering any questions about that as we go forward. So that's where the money comes from. Where does the money come? Well, I do want one other thing on revenue. We do appropriate fund balance every year, and we have a long history of not using that fund balance because we knew about 18 months ago, we didn't have the lawsuit that was going to have to be settled at some point. We started saving early, so we finished fiscal year 2015 with a little over $4 million savings. But we are going to finish fiscal year 16 with a bit of a loss, a little over, but almost $5 million. Still working at that. We still have three weeks left, and we're looking for all that we can to get that number down. We do have $5.6 million appropriated in this budget. So if you look at our budget, public safety, education, and human services are our core services, and they do reflect over 88% of our spending plan. Another way to look at our spending plan is the components that make it up. Salary and benefits is about 39% or at $125 million. Operating, which are everything from utilities to fuel to run our cars and supplies, represents 16% of our budget, and that's $51.8 million. And program support represents 36% of our budget, and that's money we just directly pay out to other agencies. All we contract with agencies such as education, several are human service programs, economic development, emergency assistance. So those are monies that really just flow from us to another agency for a very specific purpose. I'm not going to read you this list, but want you to have this list and want people to be able to see some of the things that are driving our budget this year. We've had a lot of changes at the federal level in terms of what percentage of our programs they will pay for, and that has driven some of our cost increases in this budget. A few other things that we have is some vehicle replacement money, detention center kitchen remodels. That is now over 21 years old. We run about anywhere from 14,000 to 16,000 people a year through the detention centers, so it's a heavily used area. Changing our focus on how we do animal services, using some resource officers with a new contract with Ashford Humane Society, and the firing range personnel operating. We will open that this fall. Another couple of increases in the budget. We are doing revaluation of our property tax. We see, we heard from Gary Robertson, saw those maps a few weeks ago, and so we have some one-time money in here for expenses associated with that. The general election is this fall. We do have some increased expenses. That's primarily staffing, equipment, some changes that we've had there. As you know, in our annual elections, we absorb the entire cost, and our annual elections, which are municipals, we get reimbursed for that. So this is not recurring cost in the '18 budget, but it will be. We'll see this every other year. Speak just for a moment about the debt that we're carrying. We do, if you look at our debt, primarily it's for education at 54%. We do have public safety and human service debt. That is the primarily debt we see in the 6% of our general fund budget. If you look at education plus the yellow block, which is primarily the economic development, we have funding sources that offset those costs for us, but there's certainly debt that we carry. And we also have reimbursed a lot of our human service debt that we carry. It's just strung out over a lot of years. We do pay off our debt pretty aggressively. In 10 years, we'll have 64 million of that paid off. It helps our bond rating to be aggressive about our payoff, and it's not structured exactly like a home loan. There are some outstanding issues that I mentioned last week. I've been working closely with education. So there's some things that are in the education budget that we will have to consider and figure out how we're going to deal with. I've been, met with Dr. Baldwin and talked with him several times about this. We do need to open the intermediate school. The cost on that's $1.3 million. We are adding a third year to the Nesbit Academy for $200,000. We continue to watch the state budget to see what the state increases will be, but salary increases, health insurance, and retirement pension funds are the things that will drive any state increases. Between our three units of education, city schools, county schools, and AB Tech, we pay for the full class and about 800 boys, so it does have a big impact on us when that happens. And then the home-based support, product support, excuse me, that you heard both Dr. Baldwin's talk about, that helps them monitor and communicate with homeschooling folks. I want to make the point that whatever we do for Bunkin County Schools, we do pay the APM our proportionate share to city schools. That split is about 85-15. So anything we do for county schools, we will do proportionate share for city schools based on the general statute. Couple of questions were asked at our meeting last week about living wage and the non-certified employees. I did ask Dr. Baldwin to send us some information, which he did, and this shows you, this slide shows you, maybe a little bit hard to read, but hopefully in your eye patch you can pull up and read it. When you take the amount paid per employee per hour, you see that number listed, and then when you add the local supplement to that, you see in the darker print the actual, what they're paying to the non-certified classifications that you see here. I did, once we got this, go back to Dr. Baldwin and ask him to give us a breakdown so that we know of all the non-certified employees that they have, how many are full-time and have benefits, and how many do not have benefits, so we get a better look at what that breakdown is. That information is being prepared in the morning, but we won't get that till tomorrow. And then the other issue that came up on the education funding was a salary supplement increase for our teachers. Been working with Dr. Baldwin on that, also looking at some alternatives for how you might phase that in, what the cost would be at different levels, and where they would like to see higher increases first, whether that's interletive level teachers or our senior teachers. But, so we're working on all of those projects. We will have your answers in just a few days, but we needed more information or be able to make a recommendation to you. And we also need to see the state budget has something to do with the increases for state employees and our teachers, and those numbers tend to be different. So a lot of information, still working on pieces of it. I think from a county standpoint, we're pretty settled on county budget, but waiting for some action that's external to us before we can give recommendations on education. Any questions before we turn it over to the House?
I have a few. So back to the non-certified. So we'll be able to get that list and the breakdown of, because I've gotten confusing emails from some teacher's assistants that show that they're not getting a living wage. Are there some teacher's assistants that are part-time, do we know?
That's the information that we are getting from Cynthia Lopez that'll tell us how many are part-time and so what their hourly wages, their supplement, their benefit status, whether health insurance or retirement. So we'll have that complete breakdown, be able to take a better look, and then look at some of the, there are, there are living wage definitions, and we'll compare them to those so we can provide you that information. And I think then we'll be better able to make a recommendation on how we move, if we do anything there, even what we could do there, and then what we can do on the salary supplement.
And then, so they, I guess, they're not related, but to me, when you look at our budget, it's impossible not to see what we put our value in. So I know this wasn't part of your discussion, but as far as the pool goes, I heard one number in one meeting that the operating cost would be at least $400,000 a year. So this is a part that's not related, but I think it is related somewhat. A model pre-K class, I heard one number, we can have one model of 18 students for $145,000. So I just, are those numbers right?
Actually, when we did the retreat, we did the research, and we know that you did. That's about $145,000 for an 18-child pre-K class. And talking to Paul Vest with the YM and with Dr. Baldwin, they are estimating high 3s to 400 for annual operating cost for an annual school. Annual schools tend to be a little more expensive to operate, so they are estimating that annual recurring cost. We have not had a discussion about how that gets paid, but I suspect that will return to us and ask for that done.
And I promised the last one. And I want to preface this question saying I'm all about the teachers of every, everyone. But I know in the last three years, county schools have put in appropriations from their fund balance, but it doesn't look like they ever reused it. So the school's fund balance is still about $12 million?
Yeah, it is. We double-checked that after last week when we had that discussion, and county schools is about $12 million. And they're like us, actually, Tim looked for us, and if you take a look, they have appropriated money for the last three years and not used any of those, very much as we try to do. Don't have 16 projections to know how they'll end on their $6.5 million preparation. But traditionally, we all work very hard not to spend that fund balance, so they are setting it with some funding. They're not required by local government commission to have a percentage increase, I mean reserve. We are required to have a certain percentage of fund balances.
Okay, Tom, with that, what?
Okay, just a couple quick, the supplement, is it paid once a year?
Yes, the supplement, I believe, but I think it's actually paid twice a year because we do checks to the schools in November and May, so, but November is the longer.
It used to be around Christmas time or something, because a lot of them referred to.
I think they do a catch-up in May, but the big payment's made in, it leaves us in November.
I think we have to, you know, realize as a family, if they're getting that a couple times a year, it's different than getting it out. So when we, when we look to do comparisons, and we just dump that into that hourly amount for the assistance, I don't, I don't know that that's quite the right way to look at what they make per hour, because they pay their bills based on what that check is. And annually or semiannually, they get their, they get their supplement and they pay it, use it for insurance, or they use it for Christmas, or they use it for things like that. And so as, as the recommendation has been brought to us to look at teachers, to look at teacher pay, the state's going to tell us, tell us what we need, and they're going to pass that, and we're going to, you know, do the, the teacher assistants. Last time, I believe it was mentioned, they don't typically get a raise for 14 years.
That was interesting.
Under that?
Yeah. The thought that said it took 14 or 15 years to get a bump up as a teacher's assistant, and I assumed that was all classified, non-certified classification.
So I just want to make sure as, in fairness and equity to those people, that we are making sure that we just don't automatically, you know, take what's coming from the school board. And I'm not saying it's good or bad, but we don't automatically just take that as what we, what we need to do, that we look at, we look at the system. Three years ago, I mentioned it. It went in passing, and I don't think the people at the board really realized what they make, and now that discussion is here. So we've got to be, we've got to be responsible. We've got to make sure of that for sure, but I'm glad at least we're looking at that.
It's a healthy conversation for us to have.
So I mentioned that, you know, last time, but again, I think we just got to be, you know, really, really careful that we are doing it in a responsible way. But I saw that slide, I just wanted to make that point, that that's not the way they get that. They get a check, it's, you know, $11 an hour, whatever it is, and I don't, you know, want to get necessarily into, you know, a specific way that it takes to live. If, if people are paid, they, we should look at that. And I challenge the board to look at it over a five-year period, be very responsible so we don't have to react, you know, every year. Look at teacher assistants, look at them, you know, make sure they're, they're paid properly, and, and make sure that they're all paid properly. But I'm glad we're having a conversation, so I shouldn't start. I'm glad we're having a conversation, because I knew that. I mean, I brought that up before, and then brought it up last time, and wouldn't have none if they hadn't, if they hadn't, well, yeah, we would have talked about it.
Well, I want to thank you, and I sincerely want to apologize because I was in error. I assumed that they were getting paid a living wage, and when they were, the school board, or the superintendent was here, I came over, the lady that spoke said they start off at $10.65 an hour, and it takes 14 years to get a raise. And since then, I've heard from teacher's assistants, and that isn't the case, not like that chart. So I want to thank Mr. Belcher for, apologize for not listening to her.
All right. Any other comments before we do our public comment?
Yeah, just a couple. I mean, I absolutely want to piggyback on the effort of Mr. Belcher to kind of educate the rest of us, even though it's been tried. Third time's a charm. Anyway, and I think it's interesting, too. I don't think it ever sunk in that, you know, I would, I would be, not that we're going to get into operations of education, and I know that there are clear boundaries on that. However, I mean, I will say that I think folks that are kind of living paycheck to paycheck, I think it, you know, they get that supplement every two weeks or monthly. I think it is much more helpful if they're their family than to get a big, you know, exciting check. Anyway, I think, I think that's a more prudent way to go and probably helpful. So anyway, I don't know if other, I don't know how complicated that would be. I don't know, that's just complete blasphemy in that world, but that's, that's my opinion, and particularly in terms of how the earned income tax credit used to work, too, because we know this from bigger research around elevating people out of poverty, that that helps. They don't, people are likely to get into a big crisis if their, if their car breaks, because their car break might not break down right at Christmas when they get the supplement, you know. So, yeah. Enough about that. I'm with you. And I wanted to thank you for giving me a briefing on the budget outside of, to kind of catch me up to my absence, and that was very helpful, and I think I'm thinking about the speed. So now I want you to look in your crystal ball, because I know you, you follow this closely, and say, so when do we think we're going to have a state budget?
Oh, man, I don't think my crystal ball's quite that good, but I believe they need to be out of there, the July 4th holiday. That's what they all say. They've made progress on the budget, and the differences are down to just a narrow, a narrow area around state salaries, teacher salaries. It's not as broad-based a difference as they've had in the past. I think that they intend to move quickly, and we'll probably see one, I would like to say by the 21st, and I don't have a method for dealing with it if we don't here by the 21st, but I do believe they need to be out of there and have a budget by the end of June.
So you think we'll have enough data as it relates to our decisions by the 21st to integrate that into our?
I have a, a method that I will recommend to you in dealing with what we place in contingency for education, so that while we can't appropriate it completely, we'll have at least space in the budget for, for what y'all want to include. I do, I do think back to opening intermediate, and that is an expense that will be a little bit easier to define because we define that locally. Two bills are moving along, we talked about those last time, Senate 846. Not a whole lot of action. It's in committee right now. Do expect to see 888 on the floor this week. I had a couple of calls today, so, and had long discussions with Tony Baldwin about that. So I think that gives us some opportunities as we go forward. There is one new piece of legislation I would have to tell you, I should have known about it earlier, but I don't think across the state we have paid as much attention to it. Next meeting, the 21st, we will have 13 public hearings. I just would say, I'm sorry that we're doing that to y'all at one time, but we're required if any funding is justified as for economic development, whether it's, it used to be just in Simmons, but it's not anymore, it's any funding that's there. The big one for us is the funding that we provide in the Chamber of Commerce, the $300,000. So that one, we definitely have to have a public hearing now, but any community agency that justified their request as community, as economic development, we are required to have a hearing on that, or we can't, we're not able to fund them. So we'll just have to be patient. We'll keep the agenda as soon as we can be on those, but, so that's another set of public hearings we'll have in our next meeting.
So we have the next, not to know?
Not to know.
But I'm sure as part of our agenda package, we'll have a, an amount so that we can look at that, because when we're talking about, you know, it costs X number of dollars to take care of, you know, whoever.
Yes.
You know, then there may be some of those that we may want to look at and say, well, we're not going to be able to do that.
There's three things that will come in your package on each public hearing. One is the public notice that says not to exceed, and that's the amount that they've requested a resolution, so you can tell us how much you'd like for us to put in the budget. And then the third is their application for funding. So all of those will be in your agenda package. And if you want those part of the agenda going out, we'll do, we'll do our best to get those together. I imagine we're very close to having them together, I'm a captain.
But there's a list with?
There is a list, yes, and we can go ahead and get you that list.
Okay. Any other questions or comments before we begin the public hearing on the fiscal year We'll go ahead and get started. Any member of the public who might be hurt on the budget, let's go ahead and just, why don't you come up and have a seat, have a seat on the front row? We'll take you as you're seated. I will declare the public hearing is open at 6:04. And Mr. Fryne, you can be first. Anybody else, just come on up and quietly have a seat, and we'll, we'll hear from you. Mr. Fryne.
Again, members of the, Mr., thank you for allowing me to speak. Next, Pat Fryne. I live in the urban district, and I'm nearing the end of my 10th year serving on the Bunkin County Board of Education. I think you know where I stand on the things we've asked you for. I just want to offer a couple of things for clarity and for context, but I think they're important as you consider things. Number one, the chart that had the hourly wages, it was difficult to read, but I could see the first three lines, one was custodial, et cetera. I think it's important to understand there's a difference between teacher assistants and the other non-certified personnel, non-teacher positions that are funded in Bunkin County Schools, the bus drivers, cafeteria workers, libraries. There's a lot of folks in there that work an hourly wage. So there's a difference there, and understanding that I think is important as you, as you discuss those items and go forward. The, I'm drawing a blank now on what my other item was that I wanted to bring to you for context. That was the main one, just as you consider that, understanding that there is a difference, because I, I saw something there, but I heard teacher assistants. And so they're two different things, two different pay levels. Just keeping, keeping that in context, but I think it's important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fryne. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Elliot Lunsford, and I have been a math teacher at Owen High School for the past nine years. I'm here to say thank you for your continued support of Bunkin County Schools. I benefited from the county's support while I was a student and while my mom was a teacher. And now, as a teacher, I recognize even more how you've helped Bunkin County Schools to be one of the best districts in North Carolina. Teachers such as myself do an amazing job every single day. I know that the board will consider the budget request from Bunkin County Schools, and one issue is whether or not the commissioners would agree to increase the local supplement or maintain it at current levels. Again, I say thank you for providing this supplement over the year, but I ask that you consider increasing the rate fully effective for the upcoming school year rather than phasing it in. Bunkin County is one of the most expensive places to live in North Carolina. My wife and I are both teachers, and without the supplement, it would be near impossible for us to support our family and live in Bunkin County. Nevertheless, I still have to work a second job, as do many of the other teachers here. Increase in the supplement would provide extra needed support, particularly for younger teachers such as myself who began our careers during the recession. Increase in the supplement would also be beneficial to attract quality educators to work in this county, as opposed to neighboring counties and states where they could earn a higher salary. In order for me to earn approximately the same local supplement as a teacher in Henderson County, for example, I will have to teach for an additional seven years. As many teachers consider leaving the county or the profession altogether, an increase in the supplement would be an extra incentive to stay. And let's keep the best right here in Bunkin County. Finally, back in March, I presented at the Bunkin County Schools Board of Education meeting, and there I advocated that we work to pay teachers as professionals. We didn't become teachers for the money, but our pay should reflect our expertise and our value. I request this increase in our local supplement in the hopes that you will show your support for the amazing professionals who are dedicated daily to helping the children of Bunkin County. Thank you.
Bless you, Mr. Lunsford, being a teacher. This board is committed to do all we can. Mr. Yell?
Nothing to say against the teachers I've said before, and I said at the last meeting, teacher supplement was supposed to be go to the beginning teachers, not to the ones for long-term pay. I suggest that you look at the realignment of the supplement to keep the young teachers and keep them where the money was supposed to go, not to the top of the ladder. But I also talked about the fact that the money the county gets comes from property values times the tax rate. So if we keep the tax rate at the same .604, that's the county tax, I'm leaving out the fire district, for every billion dollars, you collect 6,040 bucks. If you increase property values 20%, you will be taking in $7,248 per million bucks. So I'm making a request right now, and I will take this in electronic form, so it should be easy to give to me. I want this budget presented based upon property necessary to pay. $25,000 project, guess what it takes? $4.1 million of real estate to pay for a $25,000 project. $100,000 project, it takes $16.6 million. And if we look at your overall budget of $407 million, and we take that, and we take the 56% of that, that's $227 million. That means there's $37 billion, $735 million, and $99,000 worth of property out there. If we increase that by 15%, which is less than what we said was going to increase it by, that'll give you an additional $5,660 million, $264,850, which will return Bunkin County in tax dollars received just from property of $34,187,000, $998,900. So I want us to start looking at this budget in terms of what it costs us for each item, because guess whose house that is? Guess whose property that is? That's affordable income housing. That's rental property. That's apartments. It's going to have to have an increase in value to meet the budget. You're going to say you're going to keep the rate the same, but you're going to have, based on that, $34 million to spend, which is doggone year, 10% increase in the money you've got to spend once the property value goes in. you've got to spend, once the property value goes in. And I know, one has got a heck of a job to try to make these numbers for. And you all got a heck of a job. And everybody's up here crying, we've got to take care of the kids, we've got to take care of the old folks. What about us people that's 69 years old that's in the middle? We're having to pay both ways. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Ms. Baldwin?
I'm Lisa Baldwin from Platoon, Fairview area. And I'm a student advocate, former school board member. And I wanted to talk to you about priorities. As you know, your budget is a list of priorities. And as citizens, we want to know that you have properly vetted this budget. As our elected, this is your responsibility to thoroughly research line items and investigate cost-saving measures. As Fonda Green stated earlier, the fund balance, I want to clarify because the state requires you to keep 8% of your budget in the fund balance, and that's about $22 million. I believe the fund balance is about double that. So you're penalizing us, citizens and education perhaps, by not putting that money back in the operating budget that's unnecessary to be kept in that county fund balance. With Bunkham's unemployment rate hovering at 3%, one of the lowest rates in the state, do we need to continue expanding the DHHS budget, for example, which is already one of the largest portions of the county budget? As commissioners, you have the authority to ensure that mandatory DHHS programs are in place, but you also decide whether to offer optional DHHS programs. So are the optional programs Bunkham offers really necessary? What is the success rate? Your decisions have consequences. Look at the $50 million you're investing in addition to the Department of Human Services building. A 25-year-old arcade law was used to justify adding square footage per employee. This has caused added expenditures due to moving other agencies around. It almost looks like a Rubik's Cube in Bunkham. At one point, you had one-stop shopping where the register of deeds office, the tax office, were all in one place. Now they're scattered across the county. The first floor of the Woodfinn Building is empty, it's being renovated. My public records request for all of the moving expenses, you've got cooperative extension and soil and water conservation out in Lester now. It's just insanity, all the moving expenses that have been incurred. I'm not going to get to education probably, but I just want to know that you're vetting this properly. If you haven't considered each line item individually and done your research, please table this motion. You don't have to pass it tonight, June 30th, at the end of the fiscal year. So please look at the, the school budget more carefully, make sure dollars are focused on teaching and learning. Academic achievement is the number one priority, not building more brick and mortar, especially as enrollment has declined steeply or severely in Bunkham County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baldwin. Any other members of the public? Mr. Rice, anybody after Mr. Rice like to be heard on the budget?
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Bobby Medford, Republican, chair, criticized, done down, beat down. A criminal might need punishment, but we don't need to use it for an excuse to raise taxes. Period. CRA, Cultural Recreation Service, it's done away with, but it raised our taxes then and it still continues, still in the budget. Then we went to Aquatic Center, we're bringing up that. What happened with this Medford thing? The newspaper took it in a sensational story and everybody loves it because it's something they want to criticize somebody for. What did the county commissioner do? Immediately went right out and bought $6 million worth of property and started donating, trying to get money for the swimming thing at INCA on contaminated sites. Sensational story, you see. What does all this mean? It ain't nothing but a bunch of smoke screen and mirrors to raise taxes. Figures don't lie, but liars figure. You can look at whoever you want to justify that, but if you approve the figures, you're a liar too. It's look at the real numbers in the CAFER. Let's not look at the moving budget that moves around like a partner. These are solid numbers. Since 2010, 2011 budget, county debt has increased from 2.6, 262.5 million to 509.2 million in five years. While county debt has doubled, overall, fund balance has increased dramatically from 172.7 million in 2010, 2011 to 286.1 million at the end of 2015. These are factual numbers right out of your CAFER. These ain't things that big-bodied budgets. Look at the school fund balance, add 12 more million on top of that, and you've got close to 300 million. And you're letting the school get by with it because you want to use a surplus fund to justify yours. Holding tax rate at 60.4, that's another gimmick to raise taxes. You did it when you did the CRA, said you didn't raise taxes. How in the name of God can you make this kind of a budget at almost $300 million in fund balance, overall fund balance? I don't care what you say about this fund balance, it's there for you to use and you can manipulate it any way you want to, but it is millions of dollars that you can use. I am here for the people that have been screwed for five years or longer and not had a tax decrease. Five cents would be a good way to justify a little bit of scum and moat for the last 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Any other members of the public wish to be heard about our budget? There will not be a vote tonight on the budget. This is our chance to hear from the public. We will have yet another meeting to discuss the budget and we will have the public hearings that the county manager told us about that are required by, we have the Senate mandate at that time, and then we will consider the budget after that. It'll be, be up to the board whether we adopt a budget in our next meeting. It is traditionally done then, but we don't have a lot of information right now, so I don't know that we're, we might not be in a position to do that. We'll just have to see what information comes in. Any other members of the public wish to be heard on our? Hearing done. I'll declare the public hearing on the budget for this year closed at 6:20. All right. We have no new business, I believe. We have board appointments. Is there a nomination for the Historic Resource Commission?
I think there is. They approved Elias Mathis.
And Elias Mathis has been nominated. Are there any other nominations for the one vote? Hearing done. I will ask us to vote to approve Ms. Elias Mathis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Elias Mathis is appointed to the Historic Resource Commission. We are not going to have a closed session tonight. Our next meeting will be June 21, in the same place, at 4:30, 200 Cod Street, Room 326. And we will continue to wrestle with the budget and we will consider a, a motion to approve the budget if we're in a position to have all the information that we, all the commissioners wish to have. Are there any other matters come before the board? Hearing done. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion by Commissioner Frost, a second by Commissioner Munkel. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We are adjourned by 7:00 vote. Thank you.